Okay, everyone. Welcome. Thank you for attending the meeting this evening. We appreciate you being here and your participation. Let me remind everybody that this is a formal city council meeting, which means that rules of decorum and the electronic policy is in place. So no electronic equipment, cell phones, computers, etc., are allowed during the meeting, except for purposes authorized by state law, government code section five five one point oh two three. All right, if you would, please stand and we'll do our pledges and I call the meeting to order. Thank, thank. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. If you'd please be seated. Okay, all council members are present, city secretary, so we have a quorum this evening. Do we have proof of notice?
Thank you, Mayor. The notice for this meeting was posted by two P M. on Friday, August fourth.
Okay, great. Any public comments?
No, we do not have any.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to presentations, recognitions.
He could speak during the public hearing section and a public hearing.
Okay, great. So during the public hearing section, we'll have you speak. Did he turn in a card? Okay, so we'll have you speak during the public hearing section, which is coming up pretty quickly. All right, so presentations, recognitions, and proclamations. Let's take care of giving out some accolades and awards. So Benjamin Struthers, have you come up, please? Okay, so Benjamin is getting a certificate of honor and recognition, Benjamin Struthers, on his fifteenth day of August twenty twenty-three for his two years of service to the city of Alpine Parks and Recreation Board.
I'd like to give a specific thanks to Megan and Geo for answering my one thousand questions I had.
Yeah, they're great, aren't they? I don't know what we would do without them. Okay, and now for National Aviation Day. Abel is right in here. Come on up. Anybody else here? To honor, come on up, talking about Stevens. Come on up. Great, thank you. Okay, so whereas in honor of honorable rights contributions to the growth and advancement of the aviation industry, President Franklin D. Roosevelt proclaimed August nineteenth to be National Aviation Day. And whereas the aviation industry has continued to grow and advance and is critical to our economy and our way of life. And whereas individuals, families, businesses, and government agencies rely on air transportation to get from place to place, move cargo between businesses, to keep our borders secure, to control wildfires, to support agriculture and more. And whereas the city of Alpine and the Alpine Casperus Municipal Airport employees encourages and supports aviation community. Now therefore, I Catherine Eves, mayor of the city of Alpine, Texas, on behalf of the community who hereby announce and proclaim to all citizens and sets hill here to that August nineteenth, twenty twenty-three as National Aviation Day and encourage all citizens of the city of Alpine to learn more about aviation in our city and to recognize the contributions of the hardworking professionals who support all sectors of this vital industry. In witness therefore of, I have here on to set my hand this fifteenth day of August in the year twenty-two. Can I need you to stand on the other side?
The other side?
Thank you for all that you do.
Coffee and donuts and a little bit of what's going on at the airport come out on Saturday.
Free coffee and donuts. Can't go wrong with that. So I need building code staff to come up. Okay, so whereas building and code staff are essential, not only in the industries in which they work, but to society as well by ensuring that buildings and infrastructure are safe for everyday use by residents, businesses, and patrons. And whereas a detailed review of building plans and the inspection process involved to achieve compliance helps institute a path forward that keeps the project running efficiently, which reduces costs and ensures a safe structure is built in a timely manner. And whereas code staff review, inspect, and enforce state building practices in a variety of construction and critical infrastructure components, including structural, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, fire systems, accessibility, and energy, as they apply to housing, commercial buildings, and public works infrastructure. And whereas building and code staff appreciation day is intended to remind the public about the critical role of our community's building official and code enforcement officers, our guardians of public safety and welfare. Now therefore, I Catherine Eves, mayor of the city of Alpine, Texas, on behalf of the community, do hereby recognize September first, twenty twenty-three, as building and code staff appreciation day. And I encourage everyone to join in appreciation of our city's building and code enforcement staff working diligently within our community every day. In witness wherefore of, I have here on to set my hands fifteenth day of August in the year twenty twenty-three. Okay, I left my hand way over there. All right, so now we're moving on to report, city mayor report. So city secretary, please set six minutes on the timer. Okay, so there are a lot of exciting things happening in Alpine right now. And in our community as a whole, Soul Ross, for example, they are working towards a remote educational leadership doctoral program, which will be the first for our university here, and that's going to be an incredible asset. Also, A I S D, who started what they call the Access Program, which is a pipeline from high school into a career path. For example, their nursing program will lead from the high school to the college nursing program. So that is an incredible thing, and they're looking to expand that. Maybe it'll be expanded into law enforcement and other businesses. Investments in Alpine, such as the Granada and the Saddle Club, the Holland and the Maverick, looking for the historic landmark designation and a remodeling project that we'll hear a little bit about this evening. Residents have been a lot more positive about things going on in Alpine. I mean, we are on the cusp of a rebirth here. People are wanting to move here and bring businesses here. There was somebody on Facebook that I was corresponding with who's looking to bring a clothing store to Alpine, which we could definitely use. So we are on the cusp of rebirth. We're moving back towards the days. If you listen to my radio show, you'll hear some of the people that speak on the radio show talk about the good old days when there were businesses thriving in downtown, lots of restaurants to choose from. So we are working hard as a community to bring that back to Alpine. So that's my why for being on council. Is I not only wanted to have the residents become more involved in city affairs in the community, but I wanted to be able to keep everyone updated on things that are going on around the community and to increase economic development. So to my fellow council members, we need to make sure that the city can help facilitate this rebirth. The city needs to be in a position to help with the economic growth and economic development of Alpine. The future of Alpine depends on it. We are the stewards for improving Alpine's quality of life and the required, not only just the required necessities, but just to increase the quality of life in Alpine. The next thing I wanted to mention is on Thursday, the city secretary and I are hosting a free class. It'll be thirty minutes, quick, easy, City Government One-O-One, where we'll go over some of the things that are in the charter to make Alpine Alpine. So that'll be Thursday the seventeenth at five thirty. And by the way, there will be snacks and certificates. All right, so that's my mayor report for this evening. City attorney, do you have anything for a city attorney report?
Assistant City Attorney, I don't have an additional report other than what we discussed the last meeting. We'll continue to work on pending legal matters.
Okay, all right, thank you. City manager, you have a report? No report. All right, and no city staff update. So we're gonna move to public hearings. Public hearing number one, to obtain citizen views and comments regarding special use permit twenty twenty-three dash oh eight dash oh two. A short-term rental special use permit allowing a short-term rental to be established at six oh two North Cockrell Street. The property owner of record is Carter McDaniel. The parcel ID of the subject property is eleven zero zero zero. Is there anyone here to speak on this matter? Come on up. Please state your name and your ward. And let me remind everyone that council can't comment or respond or answer questions during this portion.
My name is Carl Fleming. I'm on board five. This is a reference to the request for a short-term permit for six oh two North Cockrell. Short-term rental is not specifically listed in the R one, one-family district in the zoning handbook. References only made to a V R B O generally considered as a bread and breakfast. Let me get my glasses on.
I understand.
If y'all are gonna continue with using the zoning handbook, you probably ought to change that to small bit or the short-term rental rather than the V R O because it's confusing. What proposed host rules were debated with this application. I've never seen them and I don't know whether they exist or not, if they're supposed to have rules with every application. A short-term rental is not transferable except owning by inheritance. In other words, we have a renter in there, they see rather than an owner apparently, but they're the ones applying for the application. I would hope that each council member would visit this particular site before approving it. The current occupant had people reason the site prior to a permit being issued. And this may have just been because they didn't know that they were supposed to have a permit. The dwelling is in R one, single-family residence. Does the city no longer support R one zoning? D number seven, my next comment. This dwelling has operated as a mini motel, housing up to sixteen occupants maximum and up to six to eight motorcycles on occasion or four to five vehicles. Harley-Davidson motorcycles and several very loud Mustangs have created quite a bit of noise in the neighborhood. The last occupancy, several neighbors were given trespass warnings. We're only signing a letter placed on the occupant's door. Is this legal? I cite somebody for warning for trespass if they've been trapped back? I don't know. I don't think so. Some background information here. There are two residents over eighty years old and one resident a hundred, over a hundred and three years old, you said, in the immediate area. The alley is used for ingress, egress, and parking for persons unknown to the neighbors. In fact, on occasion, people following motorcycles have driven across Cockrell into a neighbor's vacant lot to turn around and unload motorcycles without permission. There's a natural gas meter in the alley serving the residents. It has been hit once by several years ago in the past, and it was reported to the city. And nothing was done for it. Immediate neighbor had to put up no trespassing signs due to past trespass into the backyard and accumulation of cigarette butts near my shed, which is on my side of the alley. The garbage bin is on a neighbor's property line. The area was originally used as an artist's studio, and that was built years back. At least five neighbors protested the last occupant's application, but the short-term rental was approved. I suspect no council members visited the site prior to approval. There are approximately nine lights on nightly shining on the alley parking area and this term. Several neighbors. I recommend that the short-term rental not be approved to our end.
Thanks, thank you. All right, moving on to public hearing number two, to obtain citizen views and comments regarding special use permit twenty twenty-three dash oh eight dash oh three. A short-term rental special use permit allowing a short-term rental to be established at four oh five West Avenue E. The property owner of record is David and Lori Boyer. The parcel ID of the subject property is eleven eight eighty-one. Anyone here to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, we're moving to public hearing number three, to obtain citizen views and comments regarding special use permit twenty twenty-three dash oh eight dash oh four, a short-term rental special use permit allowing a short-term rental to be established at two oh three West Lockhart Avenue. The property owner of record is Nan Hattie Edwards. The parcel ID of the subject property is eleven nine ninety-two. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, we're moving to public hearing number four, to obtain citizen views and comments regarding the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh eight dash oh one, and ordinance making appropriations for the support of the city Alpine, Texas for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-three, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, appropriating money to a sinking fund to pay interest and principal on the city's indebtedness, adopting the annual budget of the city of Alpine, Texas for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, we're moving to the consent agenda. City secretary.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's consent agenda includes six items. Item one, approval of August first, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes. Item two, approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four city meeting calendar. Item three, approval of special use permit twenty twenty-three dash zero eight dash zero two. A short-term rental special use permit allowing a short-term rental to be established at six oh two North Cockrell Street. Property owner of record is Carter McDonald. Parcel ID of the subject property is one one zero zero zero. Item four, approval of special use permit twenty twenty-three dash zero eight dash zero three. A short-term rental special use permit allowing a short-term rental to be established at four oh five West Avenue E. The property owner of record is David and Lori Boyer. The parcel ID of the subject property is one one eight eight one. Item five, approval of special use permit twenty twenty-three dash zero eight dash zero four. A short-term rental special use permit allowing a short-term rental to be established at two oh three West Lockhart Avenue. The property owner of record is Nan Hattie Edwards. The parcel ID of the subject property is one one nine nine two. And item six, approval of the Workis Law Firm, July twenty twenty-three in place.
Okay, I need a motion.
So I'd like to pull out number three and number five for council to consider.
Okay, so we're gonna pull out number three and number five, and we'll consider the rest in their original sequence. I need a motion.
So.
Okay, and this is for items one, two, four, and six. I need a second. Okay, and a vote. All in favor of approving items one, two, four, and six, please raise your right hand. Okay, those passed unanimously. City secretary. All right, so let's consider item number three. Councilmember Stevens.
So I propose we approve item number three, but I want to have a discussion with.
Okay, so I need a second. All right.
Okay, thanks very much. Now we're gonna have a discussion.
Yes, that's right.
So I, I appreciate Carl Fleming's comments, particularly since this property is in Ward five. I have been to the property. In fact, I walked it on Saturday. And also met the new owners. The new owners are Carter and Bethany. They are really a terrific couple. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Brittany. Yeah, thank you. Yeah. He's the border patrol. She's leads a not-for-profit. Actually, she was just setting her office up on the weekend. They are, they've adopted a policy which is completely different than the previous owners about who they're gonna rent to. It's families, it's border patrol. They have a daughter who rides her bicycle in the neighborhood. They are concerned about noise control. They're concerned about lights. I recall you're talking to Carter on the weekend. He says, hey, in fact, that's gonna ask Daryl this question. I haven't had a chance yet. Do we actually have a mechanism in Alpine to measure compliance to the noise ordinance? Because he was pretty specific about that. And I said, yeah, I think we do. But anyway, I, I appreciate Carl's comments because they live right behind the alley. I understand the concern, but my sense is of the McDonald's, that couple who just purchased the property, they're gonna do all the right things and be compliant. So I'm supportive of it, but I just wanted to put that on the record.
Okay, councilmember Sedante, councilmember Nance, councilmember Roger.
Just something to add to what councillor Stevens said is that he will be living on the property. So he will be there during the whole time that it's being rented. And he does plan on, like you said, you know, making sure that everything is met.
Councilmember Stokes?
Same sentiments, though. They're gonna walk it. They don't, they're not gonna let it get. He's border patrol. He's gonna sleep.
And we do have all those mechanisms in place for noise.
Oh, two meters.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, let's vote on item number three. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, city secretary, item three passes unanimously. Okay, and now let's look at item number five. I need a second to discuss. Okay, all right, councilmember Stevens.
Yeah, so I just raised it because we all got a letter. In fact, Jill sent us a note that says, hey, someone raised an issue. I have not looked at the property. It's not in my ward. I don't know if someone else did. The concern was about looking down on the yard. I get it. I understand it, but I just thought it worthwhile. We just at least have that discretion.
Just to be clear, you moved to approve.
I moved to approve, yes, sir.
All right, councilmember Sedante.
Okay, I have checked, and I think that the concerns that they have, they're gonna have even if someone was there, was a homeowner, just staying there versus it being somebody that they're renting to. I mean, the issue would be there even if it was sold or something of that nature. And people should remember that we really don't have a choice.
Well, see, I appreciate people at least letting us know. I think the problem is there was somebody there and they won't set out the temporary, temporary open, open, open number, but our hands are tied at this point. So then that's with them. I've said it before, I don't, a bunch of noise next door to me. I agree when they come in and complain, but there ain't anything we can do. Like Chris said, we, we, our hands are tied and we have to approve.
Which ward is it in?
That's mine.
It's in Ward one?
Yeah.
You know, in other than, I can think I was suggesting they build a barrier because noise is an issue. I mean, I got a property, I got neighbors, got two-story, looks down on our yard. You split a barrier up.
Any other discussion? Let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Passing unanimously, city secretary. That was item number five. Okay, moving on to information or discussion items. Okay, first up, presentation by Colin Bibb regarding the Big Ben Hotel portfolio, including the Holland Hotel and the Maverick. Come on up. And just introduce yourself to everyone.
Sure. Joe, is there a way to put up the slides that I sent you? Seriously, thank you. My name's Colin Bibb. I'm a co-founder and CEO of Biowaste Hospitality. I've been in Alpine full-time now for about three months. Yeah, we'll just let the law, you guys see this plan. Do a quick, I just say.
You can help me.
Yeah, we just go get nice. So really what we're trying to do with the Holland Hotel and the Maverick is restore them. It's not a renovation. We really believe these buildings are still there. Very historic in Texas, for instance, a lot of them is a trust building. Our intention is to learn what it used to be. Back to. Can I have a give favor to stand in front of my shirt?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, so if you can go to the next side, could you? So our attention really is to honor the history here. We love Alpine. We believe in the city. We love, you know, being out here. I think it's just, you can't find these views anywhere. You can't find the kind of camaraderie of the people. We love this area. And most of our projects, we really like to make the interiors inspire people. We really like to get involved with community, create experiences for folks. We have a management company that we think is just top-notch, and that is really committed to the area. They wanna be here for the long haul. They wanna get to know all the locals. They wanna be locals themselves. And then really just a team of Texans. And we've done this across a lot of smaller towns in Texas, and that's really our niche. So our vision for the Holland, please go to the. Is really just to restore it back to the living room of Alpine. If you look at all the historical documents that there used to be, the Texas highways, the Texas monthly, when it was built, it was called the Living Room of Alpine. It was a really gathering place for the community. Our intention, if you can go to the next one, please, is to restore the building to what it was. We wanna restore the ballroom back to where it was, that can be a center of gathering for now. We wanna make the lobby again, the living room of Alpine with a renewed bar there, a better check-in desk. We will conserve all of the major trust pieces, and we're working with a consulting firm that is a historic building consulting firm to make sure that we really conserve the legacy of that building. But where we can, we'll do updated furniture and fixtures, you know, all new stuff in the rooms. We really wanna make it a special place to be. If you go to the next one, please do. This is kind of a rendering from the architect that we've already used. As you guys might imagine, we're very committed to this already. And, you know, we're out actively raising capital right now for it. So, you know, my business partner, Brian, and I have a lot of capital ourselves just to really show the vision of this, the living room, the project. This is kind of our vision for the Holland, you know, renewed restaurant. It used to be that the restaurant on the century was actually on the other side of the Holland, and there was a coffee shop on the other side. We really want to restore the building back to the way that it was. Because that was the original trust layout of the building. And it's funny enough, a lot of the kitchen for the current century is actually on that other side of the building. So I don't know if you guys have been there and noticed people walking through across the lobby. Just put it back to a way that makes sense. We wanna do things like cloth with tubs, things that kind of seem old, but, you know, luxurious, things that might have been at the center of a railroad cattle town backing. Go to the next one, please, Jim. We also, as part of this project, we'd like to, we have the Maverick under contract. We should go to the next one. We love the Maverick as well. It's actually one of the most, the longest continuously operating motor cords in the United States. Our intention is to buy as well, the property behind it. But man, and make that, you know, we're all the cars are parked now on the pavement. Make that more of a grassy area, somewhere that people can hang out. Somewhere that all the parents and Soul Ross students, we wanna do a lot of programming there, where we have a pizza oven, we have music out there, something that also feels like a gathering place, and maybe a lower price point for people as compared to the Holland. We've also, as part of this, partnered with a really talented group of restaurateurs. One of them actually owns Martha's Spirit Company. He's one of the partners in that. He also owns AgroCole Hospitality, which has a number of restaurants throughout Houston. He also has a restaurant in Lakey, Texas, where we have another project. And what he was able to do there in a town of three hundred people was just absolutely transformational. It really became a gathering spot for all the locals. He really got in, got to know everybody. It really became a place that everyone could go. It was affordable. It was well-programmed. He really kind of redefined for that area what you can do with hospitality. They are very consistent in their programming. You know, we tend to be open seven days a week, three meals a day. That's, you know, just having been here the last three months, I imagine all of you kind of struggle to find somewhere to eat on Mondays and Tuesdays. Just a lot of insistence, and they're really excited to be here as well. He's out in Mar for half the time, in Lakey half the time, so it really works out. And his business partner is, you know, a really talented restaurateur as well. They've been in Texas Monthly, they've been in S Y R Magazine, American Huntsman, just really, really solid folks that are excited to be here as well. And we'll go to the next one, please. We imagine that with the amount of money that we'll spend, once we can close this deal, it'll be a close to eleven million dollars construction, about one point one three million dollars annually in salaries. And this is just a timeline. The restaurant as well, close to a million dollars annually across, you know, two different places. And then visitation spending, you know, if we said people would spend, that's kind of back at the end world math, but maybe sixty-five dollars per day for family occupied at night, maybe fifty-five dollars. Dollars per day for family on an occupied midnight, maybe fifty-five dollars at the Maverick, sixty-five for the Holland. We estimate close to another million dollars in that spending, so we do think this would be a big economic lift to the town. Next one, please, Jim. Another thing that's really important to us is getting very involved with the community in our program. So, we've been talking to the people at Explore Ranches, you know, Texas is an interesting place, where only four percent of all the land is. Public, getting access to some of those things that are just, you know, really amazing, we wanna be able to program things like that. So partnering with some big ranch, ranch folks out here, allowing tourists to really see how beautiful this area is. Getting involved with Art Walk, just really anything we can do, Cowboy Poetry, we want the hotel. To really become a gathering place for everyone, we wanna work with local businesses, when they're retail, we really want to get the entire community involved. Next slide, please. And so, my ask is, if you can go to the next one, please, Jim. We worked with a town, it's called Round Rock, Texas, which is about fifty miles northwest of Boston. It was very small, classic kind of, you know, small towns, had been losing money for quite a while. We partnered with them to build a hotel very similar to this, that was a ground up build, it wasn't a restoration. But they wanted to take these old houses and make it a really cool boutique hotel, to have some sort of sense of, you know, tourism driver. And so, what we worked out with their city was on the hotel occupancy taxes, to do a refund for the first three years. And then by year, for the first four years, so a seventy-five percent refund for years one and two. A fifty percent refund for three and four, and by year five, paying the full hot tax. Same thing on the property tax, we worked out a deal to have an abatement with them, that was a seventy-five percent abatement year one. Years two through four was fifty percent, and then by year five, also paying full property tax. The reason that we did this was because it's difficult to raise money for these small town projects. Because the people that have a lot of these capital and can write these checks, are a little bit weary of markets that they don't think are proven. And so, this for them drives up the return a little bit for the limited partners. And ultimately, we think, once you actually do have something transformational like this in a small town, it eventually pays more taxes about year four. So if you go to the next slide, please, Jim. Based on our kind of estimated taxes that we pay, it's about equal, this would start until twenty twenty-four. And then through year twenty twenty-five, you do pay lower taxes. Then, once the renovation is done, which does one thing, it drives up the value of the property, so you're paying more property tax on a more expensive asset. The other thing is, you're driving a lot more revenue through the hotel, which ultimately pays more hot tax. If you can go to the next one, please. So the last one was the hot tax, this is the property tax. It's, property taxes are just less than hot taxes, so on the scale, this isn't quite as large. I think it's, you know, this is seventy-five thousand dollars going to the hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The last one, though, can you skip back one slide, Jim? Thank you. This is more like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Or if you can go forward to. And so, over ten years, we think this really has a difference, we estimate that we'll pay one point two million dollars more in total taxes. And we have a lot of data from Round Rock that proves out this thesis. So, assuming we started the concessions in twenty twenty-five, because, you know, we would be under construction for twenty twenty-four. We think we'll pay more cumulative taxes by year four in twenty twenty-nine, and then forever on out. It's way more taxes than we paid if the hotels exist how they currently do. Next one. Yeah, this is just a slide to say, we do have quite a bit of experience doing this, we really believe in this market. You know, I moved here full time to really get my hands involved, I love being here, I really wanna see this deal go through. I've talked to a lot of you personally already, and I'm happy to answer any questions, if there's been no more private setting, if you'd like to talk about it. But I think that might be answered one more. Yeah, thank you, guys.
All right, it's there, any questions, any discussion, counsel? Counsel Stevens?
So Colin, yeah, thanks very much, and you answered the questions that, well, we had the first discussion, or whatever it was a while ago. Thanks for putting the slides in here, talks about the work on investment. And from, uh, our next one. Is the basis for your analysis driven by revenue or property value? The reason being, the assessors here in Alpine go based upon revenue for hotels, not based upon property value?
Yeah, so the property value was based on the amount of capital put into the project, and normally, you get about thirty-three percent uplift from, you know. We spent ten million dollars, and go to about three point three million dollars on property, just the value of that. Which I think would be close if you did it on the revenue, anyway, and then the hot tax is obviously based on revenue. And the interesting thing about Texas is all that data is public, so we can actually go to every, we have a huge data set of how many. You know, what the average daily revenue is of every hotel. And we're able to underwrite it pretty accurately, I think, based on some comps, and same thing with the restaurant bar side, because we have all the. Public information on the liquor taxes, we're able to figure that out pretty closely.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sedante? Councilmember Nance?
I guess I just had, does the abatement start, does that start when the construction's over?
Yes.
Okay.
Once the construction's over, so we pro forma it to begin twenty twenty-five.
Would there, then, there could be an assumed loss of revenue during construction?
We intend to keep, to kind of rotate them, to always keep one of them open, so I think. The hotel Olympia in Fort Davis is also a part of this, you know, we intend to talk to Jeff Davis County as well. But, you know, I think that either the Holland or the Maverick, that one of them would be open, while the others closed. We'll do that as quickly as possible, it's just, a lot of the rooms actually can stay open, because it's on the second floor, we're just trying to figure out a creative way to. We are obviously, we do it quite a bit on the first floor. I would say we're doing restoring, so yeah, I think one of them will probably close it.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
I think it sounds great.
Councilmember Stokes?
Pretty good about the people to do this. This remodel, you can bring in people.
We've already met with a number of contractors, we're trying to stay as local as possible, that's also part of our. Yeah, it's very important to us to use locals as much as possible, and so we've talked to two construction groups out of Jeff Davis County, one of East County. And we, we're gonna try to do it with all the locals, and I think it's a big enough project that. We can probably steal someone away and just have them only do that instruction for you here.
You're anticipating a year, one year to do it.
Yeah, I would say it's gonna be twelve to fifteen months, once construction started.
When do you expect council to have a decision on your bank?
It's up to you guys, I'm happy if you wanna continue to discuss it, we're not, we're out raising money right now, sometimes it's a little bit of a factor. I don't think the whole deal is gonna hinge on this, I really do, we can outline, and I want to, you know, I, I, I'm out pitching as much as I can. It just is difficult to pitch to a small town, so I think it helps if we have a decision. Soon, because then we can underwrite that, and then go to the investors to say, well, for the first three years, we actually have this abatement, so we're not just. Kind of eating money on the, you know, variable construction loan, as sometimes what goes on, and that was offset a little bit of that first. First round, best.
And you're looking for abatement in both hot and.
I'm happy to have a discussion to set it up, the, the reason I use that structure is because that's the exact structure that we use for Round Rock. And I think that ended up working out pretty well, we're flexible, though, so we, we tried to go through all the different city taxes, we're, we're happy to. You know, if you guys want to carve out some of those, so if you still want us to pay certain taxes that go to education, or whatever it may be, we're happy to kind of have that conversation. Uh, we have, yeah, we haven't talked, we haven't had this discussion, and we've mentioned it, but I haven't formally presented it.
So you're pitching this to four different taxing entities in Alpine? So, so if you look at a buck, okay, school district gets fifty cents on it. Alpine gets twenty-five cents on it, the hospital district in the county gets the other twenty-five cents, that's kind of the simple way of looking at property taxes.
Do they each, do each of them independently make?
With their assessments, aren't they?
So yes, I suppose.
So we're, we're twenty-five percent of your buck, you're trying to get back.
Yes, I suppose, yeah.
Yeah, you gotta go talk to Michelle with the school board and the other two. Do you have a pro forma or a draft agreement already prepared?
Uh, I have a template for it, that we use for Round Rock, and I could switch it up.
Yeah, that'd probably be helpful for us.
Sure.
Yeah, and you're gonna have to go work the other three.
Yeah, understood.
So did Round Rock do a three eighty?
I, I don't actually, I'm sorry, I can, I can give you all the details, if you'd like, when I send the pro forma, I can answer that question.
A couple of questions, and just so the public knows. My members aren't incorrect. It looks like the Holland brought in about fifty-eight thousand in H O T in the twenty twenty-one, is that in the budget that we were, I'm kind of looking at, is that numbered sound?
We don't budget for hotels.
So the revenue coming in from the proposed budget, though, is that what I'm looking at here, and now, in the budget?
Of course, it's just a collection of all.
Okay.
But you're looking at the details about what came in in terms of, because we looked at.
Yeah, so that's how much money was brought in by those units? So then I'm looking at fifty-eight thousand from the Holland, about thirty-four thousand from the Maverick. Which would be like, Mr. Stevens said, that'd be a hundred, hundred percent of our revenue, right? On that, which would get abated over those years, and then the other one was, um, property values for the Holland, uh, was forty-one thousand, but we're only twenty-five percent of that. Assuming, and twenty-three thousand from the Maverick, yeah. Just so the public kind of knows numbers that we're actually talking about, I think that is important. And one thing I was gonna mention as well, talking to Megan, that I think is important with the project, this, when we've spoken about development in the area. Developing outside the city, because we don't have, you know, when we go out west, we don't have infrastructure to the far west sections along that road. That might be developable, and so I think it is very important to have some, because we do have infrastructure within the city, I think that does make this project more.
I think downtown has taken quite a hit, we do have a lot of empty buildings and stuff like that. I would like to see something like this get going, to kind of bring other people and try to get, they expect what we used to be. And even if we're not getting people from here, you know, to be able to do the construction and all that, we have to keep in mind that they're gonna be staying here, they're gonna be eating here, they're gonna be. Spending money in Alpine, too.
Okay, any other discussion, any other questions?
I support some of that information.
Any other discussion?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joel.
All right, so information discussion item number two. All right, so councilmembers, if you had looked in your packet, I don't wanna read all that to you, but. I think it's important as we consider budgets in the future, this wouldn't go into effect, obviously, this year, because we need to discuss. Putting some type of policy into place, and basically, that's what this is, it's just a rough draft of ideas on what that policy might look like. For nonprofits who come to us wanting some money, such as the Family Crisis Center. Such as the Sunshine House, such as the Child Advocacy, or whoever it might be. And I just wanted to start that discussion this evening, does anybody have any thoughts, Councilmember Stokes?
I, I have thoughts, I, I, you know, Sunshine House came in here wanting money. We would all love to give them money. But I think there needs to be something in place where everybody has a, on even footing, before we give to one, and then get nine people more. And I think this is a good beginning discussion for next year, you know, we're too late in this budget, can't do anything. I found out that the Sunshine House is gonna get their money. Um, which is great, it's not from us, but American Legion is gonna give them that money.
And Councilmember Stevens, right?
I was prepared to take a lot of discretion, right, but American Legion didn't do it right?
But I think they're gonna give them half, and then half later, but I'm not sure on that, is that right?
Thirty-five hundred.
So, so, so they're covered this year, but there's still next year and the year after, and I think if we can put something. To, to, to not become a welfare city, and I don't mean that ugly, but that's what it turns into. If we're gonna do that, I need tires, so, I'm gonna get in line and fill out an application. I, I think it's wonderful that we help them, they help us, so, but you know, Shanna helps little kids, and the Food Bank helps everybody, so. What, where does that buck stop, and it's gonna have to, and if we have this, something in place, Catherine's put us at least something. It's way more than I could have come up with, and, and, and look at that, and give them a deadline next year, just like a hot fund. And, and let people apply for it, and then we can make those decisions.
That's just my opinion, okay, thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez?
I do think that we need to have something in writing. In reading your notes that you presented us, are you, are you suggesting that we set an amount every year?
How much money in our budget that we have to give to these nonprofit organizations, such as the Family Crisis or Sunshine House? Yeah, and that could vary year by year, we don't wanna tie the city down to where they have to give out, say, a hundred thousand dollars a year. Uh, cause there may be some years where we just don't have that, and it might be twenty-five thousand that is up for people to apply for.
Yeah, so I know there were, prior to this, I, I think, you know, I mean, we were, we were giving to Shanna, we were giving to. The children's advocate we were doing, I mean, we finally had to cut down and start taking care of some of our own stuff. So, yeah, I think that it should be something that you look at.
Year to year.
And, yeah, and not stretch us out too much, I, I'm all for helping, but we have major projects that we need to take care of.
You also have to take into consideration the contracts we have in place, and hair local rooms we have in place with the county. Because that will affect our additional funding sources. Right now, we're committed to forty thousand for this upcoming fiscal year for the fire department. The following year will be dependent on the local council approval, and if they ask for more, then are you gonna lower what you provide to? Family Crisis Center and the Alpine Library both have council members on their boards who actively participate in their decision process. And so that's kind of one of the reasons why these two are main ones in here, Family Crisis jumped through hoops to get the funding in two thousand nineteen. And the library has been a, a constant, but as you, as they pointed out, they haven't really asked more until recently. And before my time, that was the only one. We didn't fund all the extras, but we provided other services, the Sunshine House was provided a facility, they were providing utilities. Because it was a city owned. I think there's probably a lot more than just handing them a check.
See, and I think that there's going to be quite a few, is, is there ever gonna be a point where they're not gonna need it? Because as, as a city, as different organizations, you always need more, or you always want more. You get fifty thousand to give this program, and well, next year you wanna start this other program, and you wanna spend this other, do this other thing, so.
And what happens a year that there's no extra? And what happens to these nonprofits who have become accustomed to getting even just the littlest bit? But I think as you guys work through this, you really need to think about the long term impact.
Councilmember Nance?
I did very light research on this one, but I thought one thing was interesting, looking at other cities. They would base it off of a percentage of their general budget, so our budget being four million, one percent, and that would range anywhere from point five, one point five percent of that. So we'd be looking at twenty to sixty thousand, one percent of that'd be about forty thousand, but do you think if the city does move forward in something like this, they do need that. Barrier saying, this is how much the money is, so that we're not, you know, coming back next year and saying, hey, you can, a little bit more, I think it makes councils job easier. If they just say it's one percent of the general budget, or something to constrain that amount, so it's, it's easy to think about. I was also gonna mention, like, like Mr. Stevens has said, this money that we deal with is other people's money. And in that regard, you know, we're taking other people's money and distributing it to other people, so. They may support these organizations, or we may be supporting something that they don't feel is important or anything else like that, so. You know, we're making our own value judgments with other people's money, so we just need to keep that in mind, but I do think that it is important, it's worth. Talking about what you had mentioned, a year, having the budget already planned out and everything else. If we can let them know sooner than later what the plan is for next year, so that they can plan their funding for next year. You know, knowing as much information from the city's perspective as possible.
Okay, Councilmember Sedante?
So we're wearing some rental fees, right, for the civic center for nonprofit organizations?
If they use the civic center, it's under reduced costs, yes. And there's options to put reduced costs on, you can restructure your rates, um, to address kind of a nonprofit. Need a certain criteria, and other cities have done that, unfortunately, right now, most cities are raising those rates up because. Position as everyone else is finding that revenue. Um, I mean, this is a hard one, because you wanna help the public, and you wanna help, you know, every organization and group. But at the same time, you have to be able to sustain the city moving forward, you know, we need to build up our reserves more, we. So it, it's kind of a, a really hard conversation, that this can't be a information discussion, this has to be a full blown, what is the criteria? How are we gonna manage it? We can't get everyone on our boards currently, but you're creating another ad hoc committee that would be determining, you know, who qualifies and who doesn't.
I'd like to point out also that, although a lot of people don't realize that the city already helps a lot, like the baseball association, all that. And I've heard them say, well, we don't get help from the city, I think it's important for you to, to let people know to, all that we do as far as.
So we provide, all the fields are, are free, so it's just a matter of scheduling. And the little leagues, the softball leagues, international leagues, and they have access to the city field, they just have to, to manage the time in which field is accessible. And we don't charge for all of the additional police. Barriers, equipment, overtime for when they work, all of the parades, and, you know. The, the school programs, college programs. We really do try to assist in any way possible, you know, when they have fundraisers, where they're pointing in the direction of the best place to have it. And so that they can raise money for their, their worthy causes. We help with flyers, we help with the right information, and all of you at that one point and say, hey, this is what's going on. And it really is determining a level, and this is where we've gone back with the hot side as well, with those funds is what level of in-kind are they getting? And then what level of, of actual cash do you want?
Can you tell me like for Fiesta sixteen eighty-eight or whatever they are? They don't pay extra for, for the extra officers that, that Daryl has to, to have.
So this year they did, um, hire off-duty officers, but it wasn't just ours.
Just this year?
Because of what happened, we wanted to make sure we were covered.
But prior to that?
We still put the barricades, we still provide, you know, a lot of the electrical outlets, the things that, and then the hot funding as well.
Yeah, and then prior to that, though, we were covering that, so I mean, that's, that's a lot of money because the chief's trying to make a budget and all that, and we don't have the amount of people that he needs. So they've probably worked a full schedule and then calling in to cover these, to cover these, these things, I mean, it's, it's, it's costing us.
So I think we, when we look at this policy and the, the direction that the city wants to go, that you really do put in those hard criterias, so that even as council turns over and nonprofits turn over and administrators, that it's still a consistent process.
Councilmember Stevens?
So I, I think we have a long place to go before we're willing to head down this path. Uh, there's no question that there are, well, I don't know, any individual or any organization that doesn't need more money than they have. Certainly, the city has, I think, a responsibility to help organizations. It, it's amazing to me when I list, Megan kind of rattled all through all the things going on. It'll be very helpful, I think, for us to know what all the city does do and for what organizations, so we have a baseline. And I think that kind of sets a framework for us to think about what this looks like. I think Darren's, yeah, we all agree, there needs to be a budget, gotta live to it, whatever that number is. Uh, and, and, and I believe this, Catherine, that you put together is a start. But it's got a long ways to go before we're ready to head down this path. I would almost look and say, given from all, all the things we got going on, maybe we put this kind of like in January in the new year, and say, okay, let's take a look and start seeing what it might look like as we feed into the budget cycle for next year.
I agree. Ideally, the budget cycle does start in January.
Yeah, but, but, but you're starting, but that way, we council can think about and contemplate what kind of policy we might wanna think about, and then we're just, we're on the list of things to go off, because Lord knows we're gonna have to go work. That might be the thing to do, and I agree, going beyond where we're, this budget, now that, the train left the station, it's.
Starting in January, February, March, I mean, look at how many times we've had to change the budget and how things have changed. So we might start with fifty thousand in February and March and realize towards the end of July that we don't have anything to put through.
We're looking at Megan's projections from next year.
Yeah, so that, that's what worries me, that's the only thing that worries me about what you said, that we'd have to have something that we could set, you know, I, I don't think that we could do that. I think we would.
So we're not meeting our fiscal policy with reserves.
Exactly, yeah.
And so this is where my battle back and forth with my own self is, do we do that? No one. Do we go with the fiscal or do we go with the community, but we can't support the community down the road if we don't have. So it's the chicken and egg.
But I think it's awesome that you did this without reserves, and I, I would love to see us continue to do that.
Okay, any other discussion?
And one last question, I wonder if for nonprofits that work, do we know when their fiscal years begin?
They're all different.
So it is?
I'm on free boards and everyone is different in terms of fiscal year. Some are government year, some are calendar year, and some are school year.
So the first thing, when this kind of came up and I was on the phone with the mayor, is I went to the IRS website, you can pull up the nonprofits. Um, you'd be surprised how many we have in Alpine, not all have a physical location, but they're registered as nonprofits. So I kind of think, from my background over the next three months, it's kind of fully developing a list of who really is a nonprofit and is registered as one. Um, cuz they would have to provide that legal documentation, and then kind of going through which ones are still active, which ones aren't active, and what do we provide them? Like the Little League, some of whom are registered as nonprofits, and what do we provide them outside the, the cash value? When you see that list, you may be a little surprised.
You, you go look on the website, just go to the IRS website, look up nonprofits, and just put in Alpine, Texas. You'll find a ton.
Any other discussion? All right, let's move on to discussion item number three, City Manager.
So I was hoping to have some paperwork for you, um, as of this afternoon. Sylvia Vega and Miss Betty Jo Rooney, we were also kind of going back and forth with the numbers. Um, it is a ten-page worksheet. Sylvia is lucky, she has a computer that helps her, I do mine by hand. And so as of right now, I don't have the spreadsheet, couldn't have time to put it together. Based off of, we have multiple options when we look at our voter revenue. We have, so the base revenue, which is the no new revenue, which is the revenue rate, would collect the same as last year, is point three six 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 four seven. So council approved this, this current fiscal year, a rate of point four six six three two six. So that's a ten, ten cent drop, um, to collect the exact same. The diminished rate, which is to collect in, in five hundred thousand, is point four five eight one seven six. And the voter approval rate, and this is what I love about Texas, is we have options on how we want to set our approval rate. And looking at the tax rate adjusted for the unused increment, this is the one that we've talked about in the past. The city has never moved forward or calculated that, could never, you know, intended to use it. Looking at the unused increments, the difference between what was approved that fiscal year and what we could've. That would be our voter approval rate, if we go that direction, at point five zero five six four eight. So this is where I need to go in and use my Excel spreadsheet to plug in and show you the differences in what we would collect, um, using the different rates. So that you could see what we would ideally bring in. If the city did adopt the same point four six six three two six, you would be below the voter approval rate. And I do have a couple of questions outstanding in regards to that, to make sure, you know, we stay within the state's requirements. And you would bring in, of course, additional revenue. The appraised values are, um, with the protest as well. So we would be looking at a taxable value, including what we've determined is the, the, I guess, the protested part, would be about five hundred and fifty-four million, three hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and eighteen. Five hundred and fifty-four million, three hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and eighteen.
And this is with the protested?
This is including a portion of the protest.
Okay.
We're not subtracting the full amount, um, which is what originally, originally has been presented with the four ninety-seven. And we added back in a little over fifty million, fifty-six million. And based off of all the formulas and everything that's allowed through these worksheets, um, to come up with that number. So I'm gonna update my Excel spreadsheet, I'm gonna take this evening to go back over this one more time, and we sometimes differ in numbers a little bit, um, I've learned rounding, I round, state doesn't. Um, does throw it off, you know, a percentage, so. That is where we're currently at as of this afternoon. Um, the other option the city can do, when you look at the voter approval rate, is they, they provide you several options. The first option you can use is the straightforward approval rate, no type of consideration, which is point eight zero eight two zero eight. And this is the one we're kind of questioning, considering how high it is, and would far exceed the allowable increase. And the other one is the rate adjusted for pollution control, which we don't qualify for because we don't have an agreement with TC two. And the unused increment rate, which I did provide you, and you can also uh, do the voter approval rate with the adjustment for emergency revenue, which we don't do, so that one is not in there. And then you can do an adjusted rate for sales tax. Um, so we're looking at the incremental. And I'll provide you a copy of this as well with the spreadsheet that will show you what would be collected based off of the values that we're utilizing to determine the rate. And then, of course, the option as far as the no new revenue, voter approval, and then the diminished. And then the spreadsheet breaks down up until the cap of what is allowed over the no new revenue. And this is where I've just got a few questions back with, uh, some of my networked people on that big difference, cuz it would be a higher.
Yes, so when will you have that for us?
I'm hoping tomorrow.
Okay, great, okay.
Yeah, today we got everything, everything set up, it's just changing numbers. Um, I just didn't have all of this reviewed up until today.
And in my view, it'd be nice to see it in what I'm gonna view as a simple view.
It's very simple, so it's gonna tell you what the appraised values are, it's gonna tell you what the no new revenue rate is, and then it's gonna show you those simple increases. And then it's gonna show you the voter approval rate and then the diminished rate, and basically you kind of pick one and.
So, because one of the questions in my mind, let's assume we went to the one-time shot. Okay, that precludes, so it's a one-time shot for how long? Uh, cuz that provides the maximum revenue.
That would be the incremental, and you wouldn't get to use it for another three.
You would get, okay, so it'd really be helpful to understand where. Cuz my sense is from a budget standpoint, right now you plugged in roughly two million bucks.
So basically keeping it at the same revenue that we would, were collecting this year, and so that would be at the point thirty-six. So if we went with that rate, we would collect pretty much the same. And the one thing that we've come across over the past couple of years is we used to collect it about ninety-eight percent, and now we're reporting about ninety-six percent. So we made budget two million, but ideally, we're only gonna plug about ninety-six. And that, so that rate that I'm providing you is the complete tax rate. Um, so that includes INS and M and O. So based off of the data, we have to bring in about a hundred and fifty-four thousand to cover that percentage decrease that we lose, um, our debt for twenty twenty-four. Um, which means our M and O will be slightly lower, um, but we still bring in the same. Thank you. I just didn't have enough fifteen more minutes and I could've had my numbers updated.
Okay, tomorrow's good.
I'd like to mention, oh, do you know the increment rate one more time? I didn't mark it down.
Okay, so the, so the, the voter approval rate based off of the adjusted unused increment is point five zero five six four eight. That is, break it down even further, please. The no new revenue of point three six 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 four seven. The incremental rate itself is point one zero nine one seven five.
One zero nine seven?
So we usually go six digits out.
Then, the one thing I was gonna mention too, just I think would be interesting from the public's perspective, is when we, I mean, last year's rate and the de minimis rate are recent about a five hundred thousand extra, uh, from the property tax viewpoint on that. I think that would be interesting from the public's viewpoint to see these rates and how they affect somebody with the two hundred thousand or four hundred thousand.
Yeah.
So there is a section on my spreadsheet that gives you a hundred thousand value and the difference from year to year. Um, all of the tax rate calculations are actually on our website, um, for the past five years, that shows you all of our breakdown. Which is where, uh, Ms. Vega and Ms. Bernie and I kind of go back and forth, well, we did it this year, but we didn't do it this year. So we've not used the increment in the past, and this year I've included it because it has been part of our conversations. But it isn't a one and we can't move again.
Great idea. For three years, right?
Yes, so we do have a a breakdown of what the value for the house is. I don't go with the appraisals, average household. Um, I do it off of this, of, of flat hundred thousand. Um, the actual median household is, um, varies between about one forty and one fifty-nine, um, hundred and forty to hundred fifty-nine thousand, it fluctuates year to year, so I keep it to that simple one.
Any other? Councilmember Sandaki?
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Councilmember Stokes? Okay, all right. So that moves us.
I feel trying to spell dementus.
All right, so information and discussion item number four, this is Councilmember Stevens.
So following up from the discussions we talked last time. There you go, good for you, thank you, about sending some dates. Megan and I talked about what might a good priorities be, and to set some dates for workshops. The board chat in the streets, which is basically, we hop on a bus, we go on a tour. Uh, and part of that tour starts with, go see Eddie, see what goes on on streets, so we all get educated about that. And then, you know, go on the tour.
Do we have a bus?
I'm sorry.
Do we have a bus?
We'll, we'll get a bus.
Okay. We don't have a bus, but I, I'm looking to give you any bands that everyone can be.
Oh, let's get a bus.
I've got to put you on a trailer so you can get the real effect of the.
My little car is tiny, I hit in, I can't even get out.
So anyway, so the first is, we, Megan talked about, can we do something in September? And so I wanted to use as an opportunity to look at weekends in September that we can go on a bus to. Uh, and so, uh, my, my only hangup on the weekends is September sixteenth, I'm gone.
Me too.
Okay?
So I'll say, there you go.
So, uh, ideally, given, to give Eddie enough time, I'm thinking like the twenty-third or the thirtieth, which would be kind of my view of the world. Okay, the twenty-third?
Twenty-third better?
That's right.
Yeah, around eleven o'clock? Eleven? Yes.
Okay.
I'm gonna make you greedy.
So Saturday, the twenty-third?
And Eddie already has the mid-wear.
Okay, uh.
Can Abel come too, just so he can take note?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, the second, uh, item is employee comp, and Megan and I talked about doing that workshop at the meeting on the nineteenth of September.
So at, during the meeting?
Uh, we can do it at a workshop on our part of the meeting, and then have the meeting. Okay, and that will give them an opportunity to put things together, come to us, be able to have that dialogue. Uh, and then we can still do our business on the nineteenth.
Would, uh, the council members who are working, would y'all be able to make it four thirty? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah.
Yeah. You will, you will. Okay, so, four thirty?
On the nineteenth.
To December.
Employ.
Okay, the next workshop would be, wanna talk about water? And Megan and the team are gathering and group gathering, all a bunch of stuff in terms of what's going on water. We're suggesting December fifth. That gives them an opportunity to gather more data and information, it's gonna be important for us to understand what's really going on, and we're looking at December fifth.
An hour before again?
Yep.
Which one was that?
The water, yeah.
And of course, the public's invited to all these, right? And if they wanna ride on the back of the trailer with us, they're welcome.
Okay, and the fourth one, which is on wastewater, lots of work going on out there, uh, and the recommendation would be January sixteen. As you recall. So it'd be city council meeting, January sixteen.
So four thirty again.
Same thing, four thirty, yep.
So the idea was to coincide them with our regular scheduled meetings, so that one, it wasn't outside John's. The street one is the only one that we really need the time and availability, availability.
Okay.
Yep.
Sounds good. Yeah, appreciate the time, we've been moved up to four thirty.
Yeah, so, so that, that helps a lot, that gives Megan a chance with her team to go pull data together. Uh, and then I'll coordinate with Megan in terms of helping work, you know, some packages that come back, so we get a chance to do some read aheads. Uh, and then, uh, I'll coordinate with Megan in terms of helping work, you know, some packages that come back, so we get a chance to do some read aheads. And then, we're gonna walk through in terms of what's going on, but.
This also ties to our strategic plans.
Yeah, it does. Right. Good deal.
That's all I had for that item.
Anybody have anything to add? Councilmember Rodriguez.
So good.
Alright, great, alright, excellent.
I'm gonna get us a bus.
Okay, so moving on to action items, the first action item, city manager.
Approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero eight dash zero one. And ordinance making appropriations for the support of the city of Alpine, Texas for the fiscal year beginning October first. Twenty twenty three and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Appropriating money to a sinking fund to pay interest and principal on the city's indebtedness. Adopting the annual budget of the city of Alpine, Texas for the fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four.
Hey, I need a motion. So, I need a second. Okay, discussion, city manager?
I would like to, to point out, this is the first reading and I did go back and forth with, uh, myself and Geo helped. There are portions of the budget that are missing dependent on the tax rate, but council needs to understand. The tax rate has to be approved after the budget, so, I mean, even if the number slightly changes, we just, and then the budget. Um, this is just the first reading, um, I'm asking for approval of the first, uh, reading. And then, of course, the second reading would require all the additional information to be put in there before final improvement. Uh, approval, and this does have all of the requested changes, um, over the next, and I, I say like I said last year. And we're slowly changing how we're doing the budget, the information that's being provided to the, the public and to council. Um, the department, um, input, we're adding more and more and more to it. And ultimately, yes, we're going to have a large drawn out budget so that we can have everything there available to everyone. Um, as we add and change things. Um, to the, I call it the, um, summary side of it. And that's what will change, the actual numbers will only change at the request of council. Um, if you wanna make all of a sudden, we wanna change what we allocate for salaries or something like that. Um, based off of the conversations and the seven budget workshops we've had. And this includes everything that departments requested, it has community input, it does have the council's input and feedback. And so I feel like this is a, a good start for this upcoming year. And of course, changes will have to be made throughout the year and then next year's budget will, once again, it will, it will be bigger, it will have more information. As we move into the direction that we're headed.
Okay, council member Stokes.
You know, I've said it before. Way over my head, I'll defer to Dan and Megan and Mr. Stevens, cuz. Uh, you know, I look good today. That means nothing.
Councilmember Rodriguez. Councilmember Nance, council member Sedat, council member Stevens.
So I have my sixty questions, I'm prepared for a two hour discussion. Well, I, uh, well, I think the budget's come a long ways, I wanna thank, uh, Megan and the staff for putting this together, some highlights which I think are important. This is the largest budget that the city of Alpine has ever, would ever approved, given we get there, sixteen point eight million dollars. It's eight and a half percent more than it was this last year, so I think that's, uh, that's an important, uh, element to consider. And then, one of the important elements, uh, is in fact the additional million dollars, uh, going in on the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, you know, uh, because the budget adopted last year was just under a million dollars, this year's almost two million dollars. And I think that's a huge improvement to really en- ensure that we've got our wastewater system in place. I think it provides a good money for the streets, as we've talked about that in our four elements. You know, uh, streets, sewer, uh, water, uh, and the wastewater system and for employees, and that's the other thing. Like, you know, one of the things that I, that I'm pleased that Megan has taken on is to. And we'll talk about this in terms of the employee discussion, in terms of the workshop in September. Really bringing a consultant in, looking at where we stand market wise. And we move from being the employer of last choice to the employer first choice in our market. So we can maintain the employees we have here, I think that's just so, so credit claimed. Because they have all the domain knowledge and expertise, without them, you know, we're, uh, we're kinda stuck. So I think the, the budgets clearly come a long ways, Megan, I will send you a few, you don't see. I think budget wise, the, the, the only thing I would suggest on the draft ordinance under section five. It says this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from the date after its publication. It's probably one October as opposed to. Yes, uh, that's a simple issue with the ordinance.
So the first reading allows us to make all these updates and changes to go into the second and final group. I didn't want anyone to think we have to go through another first, um, we will have to have another public hearing. Um, and then, this is separate from the tax, so. Once you guys get that information on the tax and we have some additional, maybe we might have to have a, a special meeting for it. Um, that one will require depending on the direction we go, public notice, public hearing. And that one is very specifically outlined by the state of Texas. As far as when we can do it, how long you have to advertise and the, just the, the time period between weeks. So we can't have it on a Friday and then on a Tuesday, um, they're very specific on that. But they're also very specific that the budget has to pass before the tax rate.
Okay.
They even go down to what font size you have to.
So by the six, we should be at the final reading?
That would, that is the plan, that's the plan.
Cuz I'm going to a lab down there.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, alright, so let's vote, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, city secretary passes unanimously, action item number one. Okay, action item number two, city manager.
Approve resolution twenty twenty three dash zero eight dash one eight. A resolution approving live music permitting fees in accordance with chapter twenty six. Civic and cultural affairs, article three, noise to the Alpine City of Ordinance.
Okay, I need a motion. I need a second. Okay, city manager, discussion?
So in January of twenty twenty three, we established the noise ordinance. Um, our permit technician and our director of tourism did a great job jumping, getting the resolution, coming up with ideas. Um, it unfortunately fell through the cracks, um, I have put it back on the agenda so we can get this approved. The ordinance specifically indicates that the council will approve by resolution annually the fee set for the permit. There's two different types of fees, there's the single live music, uh, fee. And it's a permit that if someone wanted to bring in, um, a live band, they would be allowed extended hours in regard to the decibel levels. For the noise ordinance. And then there is the live music venue, which we have included those that have been grandfathered in cuz they are already established live music venues. Um, such as the Crystal Bar, uh, the Railroad Blues, our visitor center who does have the pavilion and performances out front there, um, and a few others. Um, so we're now trying to set the fees. Um, we're setting it at fifty dollars for the single one time live music. Those who are grandfathered are at zero for the first year. A live music venue, um, would be an annual of two fifty and then, uh, yearly renewal of a hundred. So this is allowing them to be able to extend their live music performances outside the normal time period, um, but they have to be permitted to use.
With this matter of they're in or outdoors?
These are more for outdoors, um, if we start getting the complaints on the indoor being really loud. Um, we would definitely have to bring the whole ordinance back. And the American Legion, I'm sorry, was also grandfathered in because they do have a line.
So the first year it's zero for those who are grandfathered and then the second year it's.
It's an annual.
So what, was a DJ considered?
Not live? So they would have to fall within the decibel with them? So this is also to complement our, uh, music friendly city. And the music board did participate in the regional ordinance with, you know, Chief LaSoya and our director of tourism, Chris Rujia. And they kind of worked it out, they did look at other cities to try to bring in, um, some of what they're doing. Uh, so it's to benefit the city with the music friendly, because we're trying to encourage that within our community. But also to help regulate it with our residents who, they do get upset on occasions that the music's.
Any other comments, council member Stokes? Rodriguez?
Okay, so does, do the live music, does it matter whether it's commercial or residential?
It does not, well, it's broken down for each category, but they both have to have a per.
So, but this live, it doesn't have anything on the zones, live still would have to have, it would matter on whether it's commercial or not?
So on the zone, it indicates any commercial and residential.
Okay, I switched it, okay.
Councilmember Nance?
Is that tying some of the questions, um, on that? In that, is this stating that eighty five decibels is the max?
Correct.
And then, when I Google searched it, cuz I have no idea about decibel levels, then most concerts run a hundred plus, is that true?
Up, up in front of them, yes.
So is eighty five a, is that a good, is that a recommended decibel level for?
Well, again, it goes in also the fine. And then also, uh.
So we don't think this threshold would be, you know, being hit every time there's a.
Yeah, we had, we actually had a complaint, uh, during the gestalt. It wasn't about death, it was about. They were hitting sixty two.
We're not close to eighty five.
And that was probably around midnight. The thing about Alpine again is. We're in a bowl, so everything echoes, I can hear it in my head, all this, the, the press is playing, I can hear it all in my head, but it doesn't.
And just to, to restate, so the, the grandfathered year is only the first year, then everyone is treated the same? Okay, now, I read this and I thought, wow, it's twelve pages. Now, deep reading for anyone that wants to read about noise ordinance, so that was pretty complex, it was interesting, that was all I had.
Councilmember Sedat.
So you said, like, if you got a DJ, you gotta be paying fifty dollars?
A DJ isn't considered.
Like, like at the American Legion, they have some.
But you would still have to stay within the noise ordinance.
Yeah, and who gets find the player or the owner of the?
Councilmember Stevens?
So the, the noise doesn't matter if you're live or?
If you're live, you have extended hours to play at those decibels. If you're not live, you have to follow within the hours and deci.
Okay, uh, uh, okay, but yeah, but to back to your point, a lawnmower is eighty five dB if you're standing by. You're driving on a lawnmower, you're gonna hear it, but, uh, but the measure is at two hundred feet, which Daryl's pointing. Two hundred feet's a long ways away and boy, it just drops dramatically.
So these that have like live music and then have a DJ in between and stuff like that, even if it's past the hours, the DJ will be allowed to, to play like while bands switch over or something?
So if the live music performance stops, the DJ can't continue to tweet. They do try to fill them in between sets.
And that's fine, but not.
Yeah, but the, the, they're done and they go home. And we know that we'll have keys to work out along the way, um, we just wanted to get back on track with the fact that we did pass the ordinance and we wanna make sure we start. Giving them the permits from, um, so that they have.
Have we gotten any feedback about this at all? In terms of not, not this particular resolution, to put that as an antitrust for the ordinance?
So everyone wanted the ordinance, um, that started in twenty one, um. But they really just wanted control and it was really aimed at specific areas of town. Um, when we initiated and we approved the ordinance, most people were comfortable with what was happening except for one. And which we will go back down the road in the future on the construction side.
Ah, yep.
Uh-huh.
Yep. Yep.
Do we have, uh, data on how many noise complaints have been made over, say, the last year? Is, uh, off the top of your head, any, any ideas? How dramatic of an issue is this? For throughout the year?
Yes, so he actually had been providing me all of the reports. Um, for me, it was more to see what areas were being affected and kind of see how this, was it just someone jamming out at their house or was it an actual? Facility in town that was causing the issue, cuz we get a lot of. Comments in regards to the blues and the crystal and the legion and, you know, sometimes even the visitor center when they have the upper fires. And so I wanted to see how many actually pertained, so it's about twenty thirty.
And are those recurring, I wonder?
Um, some of them are the same individual, um, but most of them are really spread out, they're not targeted to. And several were, um, worse.
The one complaint you always get. The more, the most time I'll be getting complaints is during the summer, a lot of people like skipping the windows open, that's their good ones.
And, and are the complaints sustained, meaning there's been violations or it's, sorry?
Those were, those were prior to the ordinance.
Okay.
And we haven't had any real complaints. In reference to that.
Okay.
But, uh, the complaints that we have now, they're complaining, well, it's too loud, officer goes out there with a decimal beer, makes, then he. Three readings, one in front of the business, uh, one somewhere in between and then one at the location where the person's calling from. And it's pretty much. Consistent with the readings.
And that's what was great about the ordinance, now there's something that can be shown to someone who's complaining that this is our ordinance, this is where they.
Good.
So there was no Texas Good Neighbor laws or anything else that this is a, that is an overlay of this or anything else? So this is required in order to provide tea for when you guys get a noise complaint.
Well, really, well, we, one complaint that we see it a lot, when I first started, plus vehicles with the music, uh, turned up too loud, so we had one ordinance. Directly added of the vehicles driving, now we have one that helps us out as far as, uh, party houses or, uh, or businesses. Yeah, it really helps us out, especially in the party houses, cuz.
Is that Judy's house?
Okay, any other discussion? Alright, let's vote, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, passes unanimously, city secretary, that was action item number two. Okay, moving on to action item number three, city manager.
Approve resolution twenty twenty three dash zero eight dash one nine. A resolution authorizing the Alpine Police Department to participate in the Office of the Governor, Public Safety Office, Homeland Security Grants Program. Local Border Security Program, LBSP for fiscal year twenty twenty four.
Okay, I need a motion.
So move.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, discussion, city manager?
I would like to point out that this is a grant that we have obtained in the past, this current year we, uh, received. Money specifically for overtime, this upcoming year, we're requesting a little over fourteen thousand for overtime for all the officers within the Alpine Police Department. In addition, we're also requesting six mobile data terminals, these are the, um, tablets that are in the vehicles for the police officers. This would bring them up to date on all of their vehicles, um, they would be. In the twenty first century, um. Doesn't mean we'll get everything we ask for, um, but we are including that in the grant. I would also like to ask that as of eleven sixteen this morning, the state made a change to our grant number. Which is required in the resolution by the state. Um, they've changed our grant number to four three eight five five zero two. So that I, I asked that when this is approved, that we include an amendment to update that resolution or that grant number.
So I'm gonna make the motion, we amend the grant to include four three eight five five zero two.
Hey, I need a second. Okay, any discussion on the amendment? Okay, let's vote on the amendment.
One quick question on that, or two, the MDTs, is that gonna include the new vehicle that we were budgeting for? Okay, so that will be all vehicles? And then, you said we've received this in the past, is it an annual, biannual, every three years, how often at the grand?
It's as long as there's money available.
Okay.
So this would be the fourth. So this would be the fourth year on this particular program. Um, they do change the, the program names a little bit, so this one is under Homeland Security. And you'll hear the term Lone Star, you'll hear the term Stone Garden, and you'll hear Brian Justice. And each one has kind of a different, but it is all coming from federal and state. So as long as, and this is, this one is in particular to support border security.
Okay, any other comments or questions, councilmembers? Stevens, Rodriguez, Stokes?
Who seconded that one?
Yeah, I think, Judy. Alright, so let's vote on the amendment, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, the amendment passes unanimously, now let's vote on the original motion as amended, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, passes unanimously, city secretary. Alright, so that gives us to item number ten, which is council member comments. Councilmember Stokes?
I'd like to thank uh Ben Struthers for his service, um building and code staff, I don't know that people appreciate them enough because they're, they're out there every day, all day. Um, mayor for working on this old nonprofit thing, as always, Gio and Megan. Uh, big thanks to Phil Westman, the Legion for helping with this donation to Sunshine House. Um, and thank you to Daryl and Eddie, because my stop signs on Eighth Street were.
Started, go back down Eighth Street.
I'm just stopped though. And that's it.
Okay, Councilmember Rodriguez? Councilmember Nance? Okay, Councilmember Stevens?
I've done so far, we got more to do.
Yes, we do, okay, so I uh, my comments are, I want to thank Ben Struthers also for his service and building and code and also our airport uh users and employees, thank you. They help us celebrate National Aviation Day, and then we have Councilmember Stevens, who's providing donuts and coffee. Correct, on Saturday at the airport. Do you have a time?
Abel's working.
Okay, so Abel's working that, maybe we can get it on the city website as an announcement for everybody. And then I also want to thank Megan for all of your hard work, so I did seasons very stressful. I, I know you've been very stressed, thank you for everything you have done. And for our city secretary, Gio, thank you for everything you have done, you have done a fabulous job and we appreciate you both. Okay, alright, uh, council, council, chief.
We have our auction this weekend.
What time is that? Ten o'clock and it's located by the recycling center? Okay, and when can people look at the, the vehicles? Okay, what, what time can they come out and look at the vehicles? Okay, great, well, thank you, and I know that's on the city website too, right? That information?
I don't think it is, but we'll get it.
We'll get that on there, yeah, okay, well, thank you, alright, and with that, let's adjourn.